A quorum is present in person at the Waco ISD admin building. The meeting is also available as a video and audio conference in accordance with the governor's suspension of certain open meeting requirements to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify that members of the public may attend in person or watch live on Waco ISD TV or online. Members of the public attending in person may sign up to offer public comments, as is our normal practice. Members who are not attending in person, members of the public, were instructed to submit comments in writing to Joshua Wucho via email by 10 o'clock last night. Members of the board who are not physically present in the boardroom are participating via a video conferencing application, which allows for two-way communication between those in person and those participating remotely. And all items to be discussed or voted upon have been posted in accordance with state law. If you have any questions about the suspended open meeting requirements, please contact the office of the Attorney General by calling 888-673-6787, or by emailing toma@oagtexas.gov. At this time, the board will go into closed session pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, to discuss real property and personnel matters in accordance with 551.072 and 551.074 of the act. I do not anticipate that we will be in closed session as usual, which is usually till the 7:00 hour. Hopefully, we will be able to reconvene in the next 30 minutes or so. With that, we will adjourn into closed session. Okay, the board is reconvening in open session from closed session where no action was taken. Next on our agenda is public comments, and it's my understanding we didn't receive any. Is that correct? Okay. Next is review and discuss 2019-2020 demographic update with Bob Templeton. Oh, I see your picture, Bob. Hi.
Good evening.
Second. You're really, really loud, so one second. Say something softly.
Good evening. Testing. How about now? Getting better, hopefully.
It's just a lot of static and loud right now.
Well, it's really clear on my end. I can hear you guys very well.
It's great now.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Do you have the presentation, or do I need to share my screen?
We have it.
Okay. I'll just ask to advance the slide. And, well, I want to start off by just referencing this year's enrollment pattern. And you can see on slide number two, I have the enrollment history by grade level for the last five years. And you'll notice that this year's enrollment declined about 329 students, which was about a 2.2% drop, which actually is better than what we have seen with the majority of our clients. We work with about 100 school districts, and I'd say the average has been in that 3% to 5% range. And you may be aware that just recently, the Texas Education Agency released a statement that stated that the Texas total enrollment was down about 156,000 kids from last year. And the reality is, that number is actually, should have been compared to the forecasted number. So, the real drop in the state's enrollment is more like 230,000 kids, because normally, we grow about 60,000 to 80,000 kids a year. But I just wanted to kind of point that out, so that you kind of had some context for your enrollment, that this year's decline of 329 students is actually better than what we have seen most of our school district clients. Now, it's consistent in that a majority of the drop in enrollment was at the primary grade levels. It was pre-K kindergarten first. You can see that in the middle part of this slide, the cohort patterns. The kindergarten cohort for this year was .955, when normally it's about .98 to 1. And the first grade cohort was also down a little bit, but all of your elementary cohorts were down. Now, one of the other things that we are observing and watching is, we have been, you know, tracking the enrollment for surrounding school districts, for charter schools. And what we know is that the drop in enrollment is not where they are actually going to neighboring districts or to charter schools. The most likely case is that they are simply not participating in education, especially at the pre-K kindergarten level, because that's not compulsory. So, it's, from our research, we're determining that a majority of those kids are just simply not participating in a virtual program of any sort. So, it is going to create some real challenges for next fall, as we're going to have a large number of five- and six-year-olds that are going to show up that haven't had any time in the classroom. So, that's one of the highlights that we're watching and learning, and just wanted to kind of pass that along. Next slide. Now, COVID's impact on the economy, you know, has been very extreme. You can see that the unemployment rate prior to the pandemic was, you know, well below 4%, or right around 4% across the state. It peaked in April, when it got up to about 13% in Texas. But you'll also notice that the Waco MSA has been performing a little better than what we've seen across the state. So, your unemployment rate actually peaked at about a little over 10%. And then, we did see some improvement in the unemployment rate as we reopened some of the businesses, but it has kind of bounced around over the last couple of months. We don't expect it to get significantly lower until we really get the vaccine rolled out. You may be well aware that there is a big push on the vaccine, and I am hopeful that we can accelerate that in the next couple of months, and start to get some of the confidence back for our families. Next slide. Some of the economic highlights, you know, Amazon has definitely been one of the beneficiaries over the last several months. Amazon has become a very common part of daily life for a lot of families through their purchasing. And so, there is an Amazon distribution center that's to be built. It's a $215 million project, about 700,000 square feet. It'll add about 1,000 jobs. Also, in some other news, the Cottonwood Creek Market, it's 143 master planned mixed-use development. It's entertainment. So, it's going to be interesting to see how entertainment comes back out of the pandemic. But this entertainment is to feature, you know, bowling alley, Topgolf, Cinemark. And so, it'll be interesting to see what happens when we get this pandemic behind us. Now, hotel revenues are still down, and so, we are seeing that the hotel, business travel, that's likely going to be one of the last areas to return. And I do not expect it to get back to pre-pandemic levels, because there has been some significant changes in how people work. And this remote work surge that has happened because of the pandemic is likely going to continue to some degree. Just from our office, we have 12 employees. Prior to the pandemic, we had two that worked remotely. For the last nine months, all 12 of us have been working remotely, and we are already planning going forward that a majority of our workers will continue to work remotely. We will never go back to the office like we did before, and we're just one of a very small handful of companies. You know, this trend is happening all across the country. Next slide. The housing market has also been just one of the real surprises, and housing has surged. We've seen no impact on the value of houses. They're selling at a very strong rate. Year-to-date sales are up about 6.8%. The average prices continue to go up at about 9%. The median price is actually up 17%. In fact, the housing market is so strong that we're actually seeing a shortage of supply, which is the limited number of listings, which has dropped 41%. The existing home inventory is also down about 46%. And it's likely going to remain very strong for the next several months. One of the other benefits is the interest rates are very low, and so, that is also helping those families to make the decision to buy homes. Next slide. Now, this is a graph of de-transaction, so it's also tied to home sales. The blue bar represents existing home sales. The green bar represents new home sales, which you can see, we've got a very small amount of new home activity. And the one thing I want to point out here is, the foreclosures and the bank-owned sales have not seen a surge. And normally, when we see this amount of job loss, we would have anticipated an increase in foreclosures and evictions. But through the use of forbearance by the lenders and by the multifamily projects, we've not seen an increase in foreclosures and evictions, which is really helpful for our families. Next slide. Average price has continued to go up. You can see, back in 2010, the average price for a new home was right around 95,000. And then, in 2020, it's up over 219,000. The average price for an existing home has gone from 105,000 back in 2010 to about 186,000. So, continuing to see healthy growth in those home prices. Next slide. Now, we do have a little bit of single-family activity that we're tracking, and it's taking place. There's, out in the South Waco Elementary Attendance Zone, we've got a single-family project that's winding down. We do have some multifamily under construction. There's about 315 multifamily units under construction. There's also about 1,025 multifamily units that are in various stages of the planning process. Also, down in that South Waco area, that turquoise shaded area, that's actually an RV park. So, we are seeing the RV parks are expanding across the state, and some of that is for workforce housing, but also, we're seeing some families that are using travel trailers out of, you know, in the past, it was out of affordability or cost savings. But now, we've got a new breed of travel trailer families that are traveling and spending time in different regions, and they are virtually learning and just going across the different areas, living in travel trailers with their young children. Next slide, please. This is the dot map based on your multifamily apartments. We're also looking at the geocoded data, and this is the multifamily yields by apartment. Those red circles are yielding greater than .75 students per apartment unit. The orange are yielding between .5 and .75. The yellow between .25 and .5. So, you can see the concentration of the green dots around the university. So, student housing apartments do make up a majority, especially in that South Waco zone. And you can see scattered throughout the district, you've got a lot of apartments that are very low yielding in terms of students. The average yield across the district is .158, so a very low yield of students per unit. We've got about 2,089 students that are residing in about 13,000 multifamily units. Next, I want to look, next slide, we're going to look at the transfer data. I can't remember if we showed this last year. This is 2019 data through 2014. And I want to point out the change in the trends. So, back in 2014, we were only transferring in 174 students. Last year, we transferred in about 298. My rough estimate from the geocode is somewhere around 330. So, I do think the transfer from outside the district has even maybe gone up a little bit more again this year. In my opinion, that's a good sign, because I want to compare it to what's happening with the transfer out, which is the bottom table. You can see, back in 2014, we transferred out to surrounding districts and to charter schools about 2,000, and then, it peaked in 2018. The good news is, it has not continued to go up, so it's been stable at about 2,500. You can see, a large number of those are going to charter schools. It's the Harmony Science Academy, the Rappaport Academy, and the Waco Charter are the largest recipients of the students that live within Waco ISD. Now, we're going to get to the newcomers and leavers. This is where we compare the student data from this year to last year, and I want to show that the blue bar represents new students to the district this year. We had 1,221, so we did see a drop in the newcomers. That totally is consistent with what we're seeing with our clients. Because of the shortage of pre-K and kindergarten, a majority of those pre-K would all have been newcomers. So, the fact that you're down about 200 compared to last year is mostly at that pre-K kindergarten and first. Your leavers really didn't change too much. It went up about 70 kids, so the leavers overall were pretty consistent with what we saw last year. Next, we're going to look at the transfers, the intra-district transfers, the transferring that's happening within your district at the elementary level. Last year, in 2019-2020, we had about 1,451 elementary students that were transferring to an elementary that was not their reside campus. That actually has gone down, about 77 students. So, we've seen a little bit of a decrease in the amount of intra-district transfers. Next slide is looking at the secondary transfer patterns. Same thing at the middle schools. We've seen a little bit of a decline in the intra-district transfers at middle school. In 2019, it was about 799, and in 2020, it was 770. So, a decrease in the transfers of about 29 students. At the high schools, we actually saw a little bit of an increase, about 25 students transferring within, between those two high school attendance zones. Next slide is looking at the birth rate data compared to the kindergarten class. Now, I want to point out, this year's ratio dropped to .713. That is the COVID impact. So, when I was preparing the enrollment projections, the previous three-year average, so the 2014-13 and 2012 average ratio for birth to kindergarten was about .75. So, I used about a .75 ratio as the target for the kindergarten for 2021, 22, and 23. And then, I got a little more optimistic in four years and pushed it back to .783, which is near what it was back in, you know, 2016, 2015. Now, that'll make itself a little more clear when I look at the enrollment projections, but you'll see, next year's enrollment for kindergarten is about 1,109. And there again, that has to do with the district number of births using a .759 ratio. So, next slide is the grade level projections. Now, you'll notice, I am returning a significant number of the pre-K, so it's not quite back to where it was last year. I do think there's some room for growth there, and trying to find the sweet spot of being a little conservative, but also underscoring that I do believe that a majority of those kids that are not participating because of COVID concerns will be returning next fall. So, that's why we're jumping next year's enrollment, 1.7%, growing at about 248 students. But I think it is likely, it's very possible, that that pre-K number could get back to 1,000, over 1,000, and your kindergarten number has a little bit of room there as well. So, it is feasible that you could get back to about 14,900 students with just a little bit more of those pre-K kids coming back. Over the next five years, I've got it kind of declining and settling just a little bit to about 14,600, and then, in 10 years, it gets to 14,800. Now, I looked at this compared to the work I did last year. Last year, in 10 years, I had the district's enrollment at about 14,900. So, it's just a little bit shy of what it was from the work we did last year. I think when we get to further down the road from the pandemic, I think we'll have a better understanding of how this year's enrollment pattern could be impacting your forecast. Now, at the campus level, I'll spend a little bit of time here at the elementary level, but you'll notice, we're bouncing back elementary numbers. Next year's elementary total is going to be 7,747. And then, in the long run, we could see a little bit of growth, and it could get back to about 7,900 at the elementary, and that would be in about seven to eight years, possibly as high as 8,000 kids at your elementary campuses. At the secondary level, next slide. The middle schools are at about 2,850, and they're going to stay below that 2,700. Part of that is just the large class sizes that are working their way through those middle school grades. Now, the other thing that was interesting this year was, we did not see a drop at high school. We didn't see the drop in any of our clients. The high school kids pretty much came back and participated virtually and in person. So, I think that was, you know, we did see a, pretty much a full number at our high school campuses. You can see, you know, Waco High is a little bit larger. It's going to stay at about 2,100, and might drop a little bit over the seven-to-eight-year period. The University High School is going to stay just below 1,900 students. Overall, I do expect next year to get to 14,800, and in five years, be at about 14,600. There again, that's me being a little bit conservative. I'll summarize then be ready to answer questions. Waco ISD enrollment is down about 330 students due to COVID-19 pandemic concerns, which, as I mentioned earlier, I think that's very good compared to what we've seen around the state. The district's kindergarten class is expected to decline just a little bit. Waco ISD has experienced large gains in the average home sale price and decreases in foreclosure distressed property sales. The average single-family yield in the district is .385. I do expect your enrollment to jump pretty significantly next year, that COVID return. And then, in five years, it could get to about 14,600, and in 10 years, you could get to about 14,800. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hi, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, if you think of something later on, don't hesitate to send those questions on to Dr. Kinkanen. You know, we're a resource available, so if you have an idea or think of something, certainly reach out. These are challenging times, but from our perspective, our team is really digging into the data. We're watching the numbers very closely. I think it's going to be an interesting spring. I was hopeful that we would see some of the COVID return in the spring, but with the rise in COVID cases, now I'm thinking it may be summertime before we really get families kind of back tuned in to, you know, coming back in person.
I have a question.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Coraway.
You know, we talked about kind of this economic development that had been happening as far as Amazon, you know, the concrete market. I know that Hello Bello had gotten, is also doing kind of a manufacturing plant here in town. Do you have any idea or estimation in terms of maybe even how many kids that might pull in?
Well, that's a great question. You know, it kind of comes back to housing, so that's why we track the housing market so closely, is if you've got, you know, good housing and affordable housing, then the families may be lining up to go into some of those older neighborhoods, because that's going to be very affordable. The real plus side in my mind is what it's doing to your appraised values. I mean, it's going to be adding significant amount of property value, which then can help with, you know, your facility planning and, you know, it's kind of the field of dreams. If you build it, they will come. I'm not privy to, I'm not aware of what you're planning facility-wise, but the, I do think there's a lot of energy around these developments and what's happening in Waco, which I do think puts that these enrollment numbers could be higher with the redevelopment and the reselling in older neighborhoods can be very appealing to younger families, because the new housing that's taking place around Waco in the surrounding areas is much more expensive. So, it's a little more expensive to buy a house in, say, Midway, China Spring. You know, those homes are going to be, you know, pushing 300,000. So, for those families that are going to be working at the Amazon and working locally, I think there's some real opportunities for families to live in Waco, go to school in Waco, work in Waco, and I think it does set yourself up for, you know, hopefully, a really positive enrollment pattern. I'm being a little cautious, I think is the word that I'm using in terms of the enrollment picture.
Thank you.
Mrs. Tickle?
Yes, sir.
The question that's on my mind is the different areas of Waco. You got West Waco, North Waco, South Waco, and East Waco. But you guys do not deal with specific areas. You just deal with the Waco Independent School District as a whole, because I'm ill-rested, and when you talk about the growth in Waco, I'm really concerned about the growth in East Waco and South Waco.
Great, great question. We do work with many of the surrounding school districts, so we are tracking all of the housing around Waco. We do track, and that's where we use the de-transactions. We can also get permit information from the city, so that we can kind of hone in to those specific regions that you mentioned, to see if there are any remodel permits versus tear-down and rebuild. So, we can start to look at the city's permitting data to see if there's any remodeling, refurbishing, re-energy that's going on into some of the different pockets of the city. That's a great, great question. We can certainly add that and put that in our research mix, is to get the permits and start looking for the remodels, the tear-down rebuilds. That's a little different product, but I do think there's an opportunity there to look at that.
Well, I think it needs to be looked at because of the, I live over in the East Waco area, and the, there's a lot of changes going over here with the people moving over here and everything like that. And I think that's going to make a major impact on some of our schools that we have over here in the East Waco area. So, that is a real concern, I mean.
We can put that in as an addendum to the report, and I can, I probably need a couple of weeks to get with the city and then get those permit data and map it, so that I can see it on a map. And then, I can provide an exhibit that shows you where there are permitting activity within the city in relationship to those rebuilds and remodels.
Are we talking about single-family homes? Or are we talking about, I don't think, I haven't seen over here in East Waco many new apartment complexes coming up. So, I'm over here in East Waco, I think we're going to be, in South Waco, we're going to be dealing with single-family homes. I don't see, over in West Waco and other parts of town, there are, like I say, around university, there are apartment complexes going up, but I haven't seen that over here in this part of town.
No, I do believe it would be primarily single-family that we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think we'll get, you know, we'll have census data in the next few months, which can show by areas where our population is and how it's changed over time.
Yes, and we will be providing a census report when that becomes available. Yes, and we will be providing a census report when that becomes available.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bob Halfon, are you right?
Well, we tend to be within about one to two percent, you know. So the nice thing about our methodology is we are studying the markets and studying housing and population trends all throughout the year. So when we see any changes to the factors, then we make an adjustment right away. We don't wait until a year later to make the adjustment. So that does help us to kind of steer the ship a little bit, to give you better data as we get more information. I mean, you know, Mr. Manning's recommendation on looking at spot areas for, you know, rebuilds and remodels. We can take a look closely at that and see if that's a trend that we need to pick up on and then start to. Now, some of these things aren't going to reveal themselves immediately. It'll be a gradual effect. So it might be that we see a little bit of a surge of enrollment and then that that'll get our attention and then we'll start watching and to see, okay. The nice thing about this remodel rebuild is that it will be a little more gradual. Say then if we were to see a three hundred unit subdivision, you know, if you got a brand new three hundred unit subdivision that comes in, then you immediately know that over five years, they're going to build a hundred homes a year. And so then boom, you can kind of spot that growth a little easier. And Waco's case, we're looking at, you know, the trends related to regeneration, the neighborhoods re-gentrifying, and those are the factors are what we're going to be watching for primarily in Waco. Capturing more of your own kids, you know. You're, as you saw from the transfer slide, we've got about twenty five hundred kids that are transferring out. And so your ability to get more of that share by the improvements that you make to the facilities and to what's taking place, then I think we're already seeing evidence of that because of last year's enrollment. So last year's enrollment, we started to see the little turn because you went positive last year. This year, unfortunately, because of COVID, we don't really know. But I suspect with the COVIDness, if we hadn't had COVID, I suspect you would have been positive again this year. So, but COVID has masked what has happened with this year's enrollment. That's funny mask, you know, we're all wearing masks now, but it's 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 hidden. It's hidden what may have really happened.
And this, you know, we'll be using this data with our long range facilities planning committee as we make decisions about our strategy going forward. So if, you know, those numbers, you know, you want to look across at your elementary, middle, and high school totals, and we'll be thinking about that and what we do with our buildings. So it'll be really key data. We may have Bob come and present. Our architects already have this data and and are using it to help plan.
Well, as I remember, we, I mean, there's a report available that, and I guess it depends on the census data, but you can basically identify by street address and block, how many kids of what age live across the the district and how they're zoned. And it's it's a, it seemed like it'd be a lot more useful in predicting need. I mean, this is good overall, but it's like Mr. Manning was saying, it's kind of hard to pinpoint specifically where the needs may be. But, okay, oh, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Well, Mr. Dupree, also, I think what 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 my concerning also is neighborhood schools. That is a major concern because of the fact, what will we do in the future looking at our neighborhood schools, especially for our elementary schools? That is, that is one of my concerns.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Mr. Templeton has tools that can help us drill down into any neighborhood we want to drill down into.
Yes.
And, you know, kids are geocoded to their homes and he has the ability to do that for us. And I've done them in the past. So we'll be able to look at all of that, anything, any way we want to look at it, really.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Good to see you.
Good to see y'all. Bye now.
Good night. Number six, Ralph Beer, Public Education Issues in the eighty seventh Texas Legislative Session.
Thank you, Madam President. With the start of the legislative session this week, we wanted to take just a few minutes tonight to give you a very brief preview of some of the public education issues that we're watching as the legislative session gets underway. This is by no means a comprehensive look at everything that will touch on education in the session, but certainly some of those most prominent items that we think have the the potential to have the greatest impact on Waco ISD moving forward. But to look forward, we're really going to start by looking back at the last legislative session, the eighty sixth, the two thousand nineteen. If we can go forward to the next slide. And one of the big headlines coming out of the last legislative session was the passage of House Bill Three. As the governor said, signing the legislation, he argued that you couldn't overstate the magnitude of the law. That might be a little bit of hype, but it certainly was significant for schools in Texas. Overall, it was about eleven point six billion dollars split between six point five billion in new public education spending and about five point one billion targeted to offset property tax and provide some property tax relief for taxpayers around the state. Even at that time, there was some uncertainty about how you would sustain the investments that House Bill Three made in public education. And of course, that was before anyone began to think about COVID or the impact of COVID nineteen and a global pandemic on the state budget. So this week, if we roll forward one more slide, you'll see the picture that we've gotten of where the budget sits as we begin to head into the legislative session. And I think a year ago, if anyone told you that a nearly billion dollar shortfall in the state budget for the current biennium was good news, you would have thought they were crazy. But the reality is, just last July, the comptroller was projecting a four point six billion dollar deficit for the current biennium, which ends on, at the end of August. So actually, a nine hundred and fifty million dollar shortfall is kind of good news, all things considered. And it means that while we're looking at a challenging legislative session, we're probably not looking at a legislative session as challenging as the one in two thousand eleven, which brought really significant and severe cuts to public education. But that doesn't mean that we aren't watching public education very closely or having concerns about public education. And so really, if you go from the revenue estimate, which sets the stage to the session, to looking at the session, we start to dig into a few of those really top level issues that as a district, as administrators, we're watching as we go forward. And so the first set of issues are kind of all tied to responding to COVID nineteen and the aftermath of COVID nineteen in the state. If you can move forward just a little bit more, we can talk about some of the challenges that are specific to public education in the response to COVID nineteen. And there's an interesting interplay that happens here between the state budget, between federal stimulus funds, federal relief funds flowing to the state and onto school districts. What we saw in the first round of federal relief in the CARES Act was that the largest pot of money called the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, about five million dollars in funding for Waco ISD was something that the state latched on to and saw as a way to start narrowing that large budget gap for the current biennium. And so the biggest pot of federal relief funds that we saw was effectively offset by an equivalent reduction in our state funding that came through. So great thing meant that we essentially didn't see a direct cut in our funding. The challenge of that is that at the same time that we're incurring additional costs, right? Masks, plexiglass dividers, additional cleaning materials, all the things that have come with making it safe for kids to return to the classroom this fall. The sort of additional federal funds that are out there aren't actually in as significant or as meaningful of a way reaching our district. Instead, they're going to fill that hole in the state budget gap. So kind of mixed news there. And one of the things that we're going to be looking for as we move into the legislative session is that federal funds are available to school districts to be able to offset some of those costs. And so we think that's a really important thing as the state thinks through the response to COVID nineteen, how it uses the federal money that's available for public education, and in turn, how it builds out the budget to first deal with the budget gap for this biennium and then move on and look at the next biennium. In December, we saw that second round of federal funding that passed. For comparison, the initial CARES Act had about five, had about thirteen point two billion dollars nationwide in funding for that ESER or Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. The so interestingly titled Consolidated Appropriations Act for two thousand twenty one that passed in December had about four times that or about fifty four point three billion. It's going to be distributed to states and to school districts using the same formula. So you can expect that our share of the ESER funds for Texas will kind of increase proportionally. The question, though, is really the extent to which any of those funds reach the school district. So as we talk about the response to COVID nineteen in this legislative session, we're watching very closely to make sure that we're able to access some of those federal relief funds, not just to offset the budget deficit that the state's seen, but to really offset some of the additional costs that we've incurred responding to the pandemic. A second piece that we're watching as we head into the legislative session is whether or not the current hold harmless period for average daily attendance will be extended from the first semester all the way through the school year. And this is interesting for a couple of reasons. There's an interplay with what the legislature does to close that budget deficit. But there's also an opportunity here for this to happen wholly separate from the legislature for the Commissioner of Education, for the Governor's Office to decide that this is a priority and make that extension. But we think ultimately, because the legislature is wrestling with that budget deficit, that it's it's also a legislative issue, that we need our legislators to see this as a priority and to communicate that to TEA and to the Governor's Office as well. And then just want to hit that as another piece of the response to COVID nineteen, the agency's already indicated that they're going to pause the A through F accountability ratings for this school year, even though they'll still be administering the STAR tests that those are driven on. And so I think this opens up the door as we think about the response to COVID nineteen to having a broader conversation about those accountability ratings and how the accountability system functions in this legislative session. But the real key is that those ratings are going to be paused because I think we can all acknowledge that this is an extraordinary school year and as unique in many ways as the last school year was, and that anything that came out of this in the state's current accountability system would not really capture what's happening for kids in the classroom, the Herculean efforts that are happening to make sure that kids can continue learning remotely, if that's what their families have chosen, or that they're safe to come into the classroom if their families want them to be here in person. If we roll forward to the next slide, there are two more issues that we'll highlight. And a lot of these are really intertwined with each other as we look at the upcoming legislative session. The next is exactly how that nine hundred and fifty million dollar shortfall for the current biennium is addressed. We've already talked about there's there's a play with federal funding here and what happens and the extent to which the legislature and the state rely on those federal funds that are really educational funds, public education funds from the federal government to close that gap. But there's another thing I think we all need to be very cognizant of, and that's that we, there has been some discussion among legislatures or legislators that school district fund balances are, in some sense, fair game. So school districts include a fund balance that allows us to, for one thing, smooth out revenue between when we receive state payments. Also allows school districts to plan for long term projects because there's no dedicated facilities funding in the state of Texas. Really, it allows us to undertake facilities projects in between bond programs or without calling bond programs of some of those larger maintenance projects. So school districts that have a fund balance are really school districts, especially if they have a healthy fund balance that are appropriately managing their taxpayers' dollars and planning for future needs. What the legislature has looked at, or I should say, some individual legislators, I don't know if there's a consensus around it, is the numbers attached to those fund balances and said, if we're looking for wherever we can pull funds from to try and close this nearly billion dollar deficit at the time they thought it was much larger, then this is a place that we might be able to lean into and that we might see if we can reduce state funding in some relationship to the fund balance that school districts have so that school districts would shoulder some of the burden of closing that deficit for the current biennium. And we're going to be watching this very closely. We think it's hugely problematic and we think it actually penalizes those school districts that have been the best stewards of taxpayer dollars. By no means is it clear that there's a consensus to move in this direction in the legislature, but there are some legislators that are going to be key players in the process who have started the conversation, and that's why we're watching it. And then the last piece that we're really watching into, all of these have kind of a funding component, a funding theme, is public education funding more broadly and the need and the desire to maintain those significant investments that were made in the last legislative session through House Bill Three. One area that's been of particular note for us already is maintaining the funding for the teacher incentive allotment heading into the next biennium. This is one of the areas of House Bill Three that really hasn't kicked in in full yet. And so a lot of districts haven't seen the funding flow through from the teacher incentive allotment. We joined with a coalition of other school districts, other education advocates called Best in Class to submit testimony during the interim advocating for the full funding of the teacher incentive allotment. We're working aggressively through our human resources department to put this plan in place, which is going to allow our best teachers to be recognized and to be rewarded accordingly. We think that across the board in House Bill Three, the state has made some promises to schools and to families that are important to keep. But we think this promise to teachers is also particularly important for the legislature to keep and to sustain that funding. And we worry a little bit because so few districts have started to see this allotment that some legislators may think it's a place where they can find funds that the cuts won't be felt as much as if they take some of the allotments or some of the investments in House Bill Three that school districts are really receiving at their full funding levels already. So those are the real top of mind issues that as an administration, we're watching as we head into this legislative session. Certainly, there will be other significant education issues that come up along the way. We know that redistricting is going to cast a shadow over the regular session, even though we anticipate that it probably won't actually happen until a special session, especially as the delivery of the census data needed to do the redistricting process has been pushed back. But that's going to take a lot of the oxygen out of the state legislature as well during this session. So very much would would like the opportunity to hear from you, the issues that you're interested in, so that we can support the board in following those issues and support you in your advocacy as well.
Kyle, thank you for this opportunity. Regarding the shortfall for the two thousand twenty one biennium, do you recall, has that relationship between reductions in state funding tied to school district fund balances? Has that been in play before with tight budgeting that the state legislature has done in the past?
I believe it was floated as a possibility in the two thousand eleven session, but not actually put into place. So it's it's kind of like a bad penny that keeps coming around whenever.
And that's my concern. It's coming back full cycle again, you know, kind of same story, second verse. And, you know, you're riding on target with those school districts that are good stewards of taxpayer money and build a fund balance for those emergency needs. We watch it, you know, we built it up in relation to how we construct a budget and everything during those type times. So certainly a concern. I'm glad that that's on the list of things to address because if it comes back full circle and gains momentum, obviously, that's going to be a a concern going forward. So, thank you.
And hopefully, the improving revenue estimate is going to help us there, that it's not as dire of a deficit for the current biennium as it was when that conversation started, but still, I think, cause for concern.
I think history tells us the state will be looking for outs, you know, so that's that's what we need to be sensitive to in that regard as well. So, okay.
I think good points, Mr. Sykes. I, you know, I just want to emphasize that ADA hold harmless is critical for us. And I know Cheryl Davis has run some projections on that and what that means to us, and that is over five million dollars. She might say more like six, six and a half million. I saw her on, she's logged in, I think, but it's a lot of money for us. And so we do need the state to hold us harmless this second. And so we do need the state to hold us harmless this second semester.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great summary. Next is to review and discuss the 2122 calendar options with Ms. Cornblum.
Hello. All right. So really, this is in response to our last board meeting, when we were asked to review minutes. We added 15 extra minutes to the calendar due to COVID-19, when we changed our calendar so that we could bank days. When the calendars, the draft calendars, calendars were made for the 202122 school year, those were left. And so we were asked to maybe reconsider that decision. So we went and looked at districts around us and looked at what their minutes were showing. And so this is a reflection of that investigation. So with the additional 15 minutes, we were at 465 minutes each day. And as you can see, looking at the elementary level, that put us a bit above a lot of the districts around us. When we go down to middle school, we were five minutes under Conley and then 10 minutes under Temple ISD, but still above most. Looking at high school, kind of the same situation. We were the same as Conley, but Temple High School was a little bit above us, but we were above everyone else. And so in looking at that, we did notice, you know, if keeping those minutes moving forward would put us having a longer day than a lot of districts. So at the bottom, you see a summary, and what that shows you is what the calendar was in 2020, 2021, before we changed it for COVID. So at that time, we were at 450 minutes without those extra 15 minutes added. That gave us 78,300 minutes with an extra 2,700. When we changed the calendar, or when we added the 15 minutes and then left that on for the upcoming school year in our draft calendars, we would have had 80,445 on Draft Calendar 1, giving us 4,845 minutes, even with my glasses, I'm having to squint at this. And then Draft Calendar 2, we would have been at 79,980, and that was 4,380 minutes over. And then our Draft Calendar 3, 79,515 and over 3,915. So we always want a little bit of cushion on our calendars, but after looking at where the other districts are and analyzing ours, we decided that maybe we didn't need that much. And of course, you know, there are no certainties where COVID is concerned, but as always, if something were to happen and we're in a different situation, we know that we could always come back and revisit that. So going down, these are the proposed calendars that come next, and the, there we go. So we're not asking on a vote or anything on our calendars tonight, but these are the calendars that we would like to put out for public comment. They've been out within the district, but just wanted to let the board know that these three draft calendars do reflect the removal of the extra 15 minutes. So any questions about that? Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, Forecast 5 Analytics Dashboard.
Thank you, Dr. Kinkanen, President Teakle, members of the board. I'm here tonight to just discuss a little bit about our district and campus data dashboards that we have been working on. If you can look at our timeline here, we have taken from September to December to gather up all of our information from our various different data sources that we have frontline with teams in our SIS and our ERP, which is our HR side and our student information, and also EdMim and some other programs that we use for our students, and gather up all that data and put them into easy-to-read, at-a-glance, within touch of our campus administrators and our district administrators. We met with all of our departments in December through February, just to kind of get what they wanted to see on their dashboards and what they needed, what information that they would like to see as ready, at-a-glance. And then now we're starting our rollout. And our rollout is starting with campus administrators and district administrators to get these dashboards, and I'll give you a taste of what they look like in the coming slides. First of all, some of the information that they do is just enrollment by grade, by campus, student demographic breakdown, student services, discipline, all of this information will be at-a-glance at the desk of the computer of the administrator on campus, so they can start making some data-driven decisions. And HR as well, it will be real easy for us now that Frontline has actually purchased FiveLab, they'll integrate that in and we'll be able to get more information that is true in real time versus having to build a report through SQL and try to pull that data and make sure that we have the right queries in there. All of this will be done for us. Here's an example of what the dashboards will look like, and every one of those bars are clickable. So if, for example, at the top, enrollment by grade, if I wanted to see where all the ninth graders were, I click on that, and it would just sort all the rest of the graphs down there by ninth grade or by 10th grade or whatever grade, or I could click on the school and it would show me what their grades are above them. So if you look at the next one, this is an example of what the campus would see. And again, this gives them all their information, what their LEP status is of the students, how many there are, their ethnic and race background, and breakdown at their campus, economically disadvantaged, the discipline data, the district attendance data, and the campus attendance data, they can drill into that and actually get to those students and then see student reports. One of the next things that I'll show you is the e-learning engagement versus the actual attendance, so we can actually pull that attendance data, take a look at it, and see who is actively engaged in Canvas. So that fits right along with what TEA is saying for attendance, so that we can see if they're engaged in Canvas, then they can be counted present. And then the last thing, there's STAR data that's in there as well, and so this is all reflective data that we can take a look at and then start building our remediations for curriculum and help out Ms. Cornblum and her endeavors. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you so much for that. It seems really helpful. Is this available just for the administrators, or do teachers have access to this? Can they kind of drill down to particular students or a class and kind of get that? I'm thinking, as a former teacher, you know, the STAR data, knowing, you know, right in the beginning of the year, which kids were weak in what subjects, and being able to kind of get a game plan from day one, is that...
Yes, ma'am. In the timeline that I have that's on here, we will be rolling that out to the teacher level in August. We're going to do campus administration, district administration first, get everybody used to it at the top, where we can start talking about how to train and move forward, train the trainer model, so we can get all the teachers involved in it. There's a student report section on here in FiveLab that will actually give everything pertinent to that student, their discipline history, their attendance history, everything that they need to know that a teacher needs to know when a student's walking into their classroom.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
Who's compiling? So I'm familiar with PEEMS. Is this all, is it just, it's not just PEEMS, because you've got STAR data?
It's every, one of the great things about this is that it takes multiple platforms and blends it all together into KPIs, which is Key Performance Indicators, so that we can actually look at those dashboards from multiple angles, multiple data sources, and blend them into one, so that we can take that data and interpret it into making decisions for the district-wide as well as for campus.
Is that your job? Who's overseeing that compilation of data?
That's me.
Jerry's done a tremendous, he has done a tremendous job of helping us with Frontline and putting this together, and this is helpful, because you can start to see patterns of your students, and you get a whole picture of a student, so you don't have to open up multiple platforms and look at students, you're looking at the whole picture in one place. And it's huge, this is huge for us, so we just wanted to share with you the progress that we're making on that. And, you know, Jerry and Dr. Gutierrez and Dina Cornblum, not doctor yet, but she's getting close, have been working together to really make changes in our student management system and improving Frontline, and I'd probably add our PEEMS director to that, Patrick Upmore, but they have all been collaborating to help us improve. But this is tremendous in helping us follow and track our students. When you talk about, you know, data meetings to discuss students and some of the meetings that are happening now at the high school level to track our kids that need credits, you can pull everything into one spot.
Yeah, and I would be remiss without mentioning Adam Benton. He has been an amazing resource, and he's my project lead on this. And I come to him like Tim the Toolman, and I'm like, hey, we need more power, and he's like, okay, let me get it for you. And so he is really, really been a blessing with this.
This is really great. Thank you for the presentation about it.
There will be a public one that will be outward-facing, that won't be drillable, so that we can do that, but that's coming in March as well.
You could literally click on these bars and pull up lists of kids, right? So if there's a percent of students at a campus that are blue or green, you would be able to find your kids in one spot, just by clicking.
Yeah, you click on whichever color you want, and it actually pulls that list of kids. You can take and click on, it'll say the number, you click on the number, and there's an Excel spreadsheet. There's an Excel spreadsheet with all of their data in it, so that way, and you can also filter right now by remote learner or non-remote learner, so we can check on their attendance, and it's a fantastic program.
Mr. Sykes.
Is the full implementation then, after that Stage 2 rollout, is it aligned with that Stage 2 rollout?
The full implementation, meaning that we roll it all the way down to the teachers, yes, sir. After Stage 2, after that last rollout with teachers, we'll be using it pervasive throughout our system, and hopefully, that'll become a word that we use all the time as FiveLab.
And then one other point. So on the dashboards, are they user-defined in terms of setup, or they predefined dashboards?
They're departmental-defined at first, that's why we met with all our departments to make sure that we had the right key performance indicators for each of their pages. And then for the campus level, there were some predefined, but we actually are still, this will evolve over time. I mean, anytime you give somebody data like this, they're going to say, hey, I need this, hey, I need this, and we'll continue to keep pulling that together.
Yeah, curious as to the level of customization, you know, on the dashboards, you know, how far down that would go from...
It can get pretty customized. I mean, we can do anything we want, and then we have another product that we're using as well with this to help us with it. Yeah.
Mrs. Teakle. I, as a former teacher, this is incredibly exciting to me, because I think the ability to go and see every kind of what Dr. Kinkanen had spoke to about having different platforms and having to log on to different systems, I think this is incredible. And I think if it is customizable and you're able to update things, I think in terms, yeah, in terms of even per student and for teachers, to really utilize it as a tool. I mean, if you can go through and click on, I need to know math, where my, how to group my students, and this basically does it for you through the data and their scores, I mean, that is huge, and will save so much time for our teachers having to, typically, our teachers disaggregate the data by hand and go through and make their groups by hand, and that takes tons of time.
It takes a lot of the guesswork out of starting a school year, when you see the context of the student on a one-pager, yes, ma'am.
So this is huge, and I really want to commend your team for all the work that you guys have been putting into this. It's very evident that you've been working in collaboration and really listening to the needs of the campuses, the administrators, and so just, yeah, I mean, I'm really excited about it, and I'd love to see how it rolls out. I know there's always glitches in technology, so not under any false pretense, but I feel very assured that you guys can figure that out as we roll it out.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, announcements.
Three things that we want to touch on this evening before we go. The first is that the lotteries for Hillcrest, PDS, and Lake Air Montessori School are currently open. You can find the place to submit your lottery form by going to our website at wacoisd.org, and there's information on our homepage. The application period for the Atlas Academy, our Middle School Gifted and Talented Program, is also open now. All three of those opportunities are now through January 29th is the cutoff to submit for those really unique, incredible educational programs that are available. Want to note that Monday is a student and staff holiday for Waco ISD and Observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day, and then the following day, as students and staff come back, we'll be kicking off the second semester on January 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Dr. Kinkanen? We are meeting next week. Is it our regular meeting next week?
Next week is our special meeting and our team-building...
Team-building, that's right.
... meeting, and then the following week is our regular meeting. Next week will be a longer meeting, and then the following week will be, should be a little bit shorter.
Right, so remember, we have our three-hour required team-building, and we have a couple of items in addition that are needed to help move work along. So we'll encourage everybody to be sure and look at your packet when you get it, and make sure you forward any questions to Dr. Kinkanen, so we can get the information everybody needs and wants in order to help our meeting next Thursday move quickly, so we're not here three plus plus plus.
It's the three-hour required team-building, so we'll have a couple of action items for you prior to that, but they should be pretty straightforward, and then we'll have Kay Douglas here from Tasby.
All right. With that, thank you. Good night.